Hi Lindsay, just doing a sound check one, two. Hold on, let me turn out the sound. Hey Lindsay, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes. Alright.
Very good evening, everybody. Welcome to our business meeting. Like to call this meeting to order on March 7th. At 6:02 PM to give an elementary school. We'll start with the pledge allegiance first. Alright. So we have to make a motion to add that, right?
Yes, so I'd like to ask that we add L to our action items and that's to set a special meeting for April 7th, which is normally our committee of the whole night. And that's really to start our discussions on the 25, 26 financial budget. So like to like to add that to the.
Can I get a motion to add? Action item L. Special meeting. George first.
Awesome.
Action. Oh, favor, I'm sorry. Yeah. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make I'll make a motion to put the agenda.
Are you a second?
I'll second.
Oh, favor. Motion passes. Mrs. Elmer, visitor recognition.
We have nobody that wants to speak, however, we have new rooms here.
I see that, thank you for coming out now. Okay, they want to introduce themselves, so I don't know who they are.
When they, yeah, they can.
They're gonna, they're gonna come on later, we're gonna, we're gonna let you listen to some finance, school finance stuff first. Then we'll get you on board, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Lindsay. We're gonna, we snuck you up a little bit higher here.
Okay. Alright, let me share my screen here.
Well, she's pulling that up, this is just a presentation of the revised budget for for this current school year.
Can you guys see, can you see that okay?
We're good, yep.
Okay. Alright, thanks for having me tonight so that we can talk about going over the budget. So one of the things that is important to know about the budget is that we have to separate things into what we call different funds and each of those funds have to balance on their own. Some of the funds that GFW have are, one, the general fund, which is the largest fund and has the largest budget to it. Because that's where all the daily operating costs of educating our students go, anywhere from our salary and benefits to utilities, health and safety, transportation, special education services, capital expenditures, all hit the general fund. We also have two special revenue funds, we have a food service fund and the community service fund. The food service fund is pretty self-explanatory. It's where we record all the financial activities of a school district for their food program. The community service fund is a fund where we record activities such as summer rec, general classes that we have during the year, it also is where our preschool program lies, which we also call school readiness. It also has things like non-public funds that go in there and what we call early child finance, our family education. Those are the majority of the things that run through that that community service fund. We also have a large construction fund going on right now with the build button of the school. We have the debt service fund, which is where we record all of the revenue and expenses related to the bonds. And then we also have a trust fund, and in this case, this trust fund is related to a scholarship. So now we're gonna move into the details of the revised 2025 budget. So we'll start with the general fund revenues, as that's our largest fund. And this kind of gives you, it's a nice pie chart of the different types of what we call sources, which means where are the revenues coming from? So the largest is our state, and that's typical across all districts in Minnesota. So in the revised budget, 78% of the revenue comes from the state. And in the adopted budget, it was 77%, so very close. The next largest is our property taxes, and that's at 17%, and that's unchanged from the adopted budget. The other revenues are our federal at 3% and the other at 1%. The others are gonna be your local donations, grants, medical assistance, gate receipts, and then miscellaneous revenue for other things that don't fall in those categories. Another way to kind of analyze the general fund revenues is to take a look at what it looked like to our audited prior year numbers, the revised budget, and then compare that to the adopted budget to see what changes and swings that we had. Because when you do approve the adopted budget, it has to be done in the previous fiscal year for the next year. So there's always assumptions and estimates that have to be made. So just to kind of give you some of the swings that happened from the adopted budget is there was a decrease in our local property tax levy, and that's just due to, there are a couple levy formulas that are advanced recognition versus the delayed revenue, so the levy gets approved and we actually don't recognize it as revenue until the previous year or till the next year. And one of them is the CTE levy, so those are gonna depend on your actual expenses, and once that budget gets proved and trued up and there could be adjustments from the prior year because it's advanced recognition, that stuff is what will change from the adopted budget compared to the revised budget. Um, we also had a decrease in the other local revenue. And in that's just due to MA dollars going down compared to other years. That's an account that is really an estimate, so I usually look at five-year average, sometimes there's big sometimes there's decreases, so there's just far this year. Interest income too, it's always good to be conservative, you don't know where the interest rates are gonna be and talk of where the economy is gonna go. You know, it's good to be conservative, but now that we're mostly through the year, you can kind of estimate just the last few months that are left. Our state aid is is mostly, that's the area that is estimated the most because a lot of the formulas are based upon our ADMs. And also the other bigger piece is special education revenue. And that always takes a year to finalize numbers and true up what your actual special expenditures are that drive our revenue. So some of the changes were change in the ADMs. We also had an increase in 40,000 for our cooperative student personnel aid, that was unknown at the time of the adopted budget. And then we had an increase of 6,000 and 30,000 in summer unemployment aid.
Lindsay, can you hear us?
The next one, I'm sorry, what?
I think there's a question from one of the board members.
Okay.
What does MAs for?
Medical assistance. MA, medical assistance. Yep, sorry, I should not abbreviate things, but yes, medical assistance.
And then one other abbreviation you threw out was ADM, and that's average daily membership.
Yep. Any other questions before I go on? Okay. Um, and then also comparing to the adopted budget, the federal revenue is up. And that's just due to when we do the adopted budget, we actually don't know what our entitlements are for your Title I, your Title II programs and your federal special, usually those come afterwards, usually around that fall time of the current fiscal year, so it's just truing them up to the entitlements that are not known now. One thing I know has been pushed into or is a big difference from looking at the prior year, so not the adopted budget to the revised budget, but the prior year to the revised budget is those federal revenues. And it does look really different, and that is truly due to two things. One, that we had quite a bit of COVID dollars in fiscal year 24 that we finished using up. So you can see there's two line items, Esther, two and three, which make up over right around 400,000. And you can see I left the list of other items on there because those are all different federal dollars that have flown through during since COVID happened in March of 2020. So you can see there's lots of fluctuations that have happened in the federal revenue world. The other bigger piece of the decrease from the actual 24 to the revised budget is we also no longer have the reader's grant. That is done and it's not a competitive grant that's offered anymore by MDE. So that average anywhere from 470,000 a year, just you can see it was 400 or in fiscal year 24, excuse me, it was 571,000. So those are the big changes in the federal dollars compared to the previous year, so it's basically one-time grant funding that is no longer there. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the general fund expenditures. And this pie chart gives you a good way to look at the expenditures by object series. And what's that, what that means is kind of looking at it as to what you're paying for or what the good is. So it's really common and typical in schools because we're considered a service organization that most of our budget is gonna be based upon your salaries and wages and your benefits. So in this case, in the revised budget, 73% of our budget is made up of salary and benefits. Adoption, the adopted budget was at 72. And this is in line with where the state average is for salary and benefits, it ranges anywhere from that 70 to 75% usually. The next largest is the purchase service areas at 20%. And what goes into this is a lot of things. So we have staff development costs that go in there, we have costs for special ed programming, so the purchase services that we get from Riverbend, our insurance, repairs and maintenance, our transportation, some of our transportation costs and some of our custodial costs are also made up of those purchase services. And then we also have a smaller piece of the pie, which is our materials and capital at 5 and 2%, so much smaller piece. Alright, so another way to look at it, just like we did the revenues, is looking at the prior year and your revised versus your adopted budget. Wages and salaries are up due to up 64,000, and most of this is due to at the end of the a school year, you're gonna have retirements, you're gonna have leaves, and then you have hirings. It just so happened in this year, we had hirings that were larger than the individuals that left or retired. And then there was transition that happened in many positions. The benefits are up to adjusting to the changes that we just referred to in the salaries. And due to changes that happened during our open enrollment time, because July 1st is a new benefit year. The purchase services is up, and that is due to the change from actually having an employee force the Spanish as a classroom teacher to contracted, and our speech services are higher due to having to find that as a contracted versus internal. And then supplies are down, just decided to move, not move forward, some of the purchases are just running a little bit slower than they have in the previous years. So after analyzing all that, then we just put it into a document so where you can compare the revenues and expenditures by fund so that it can get approved. And also just kind of look at each fund just to make sure that nothing looks abnormal compared to the adopted budget. And then the last piece is looking at our fund balance. And what the fund balance does, it's a snapshot of where you think the district is gonna end. It's kind of like thinking of it as a savings account, even though it's not exactly all cash. But it also kind of tells you how healthy it is. And one of the most important things to analyze when looking at this is that you're looking at your restricted reserves and you're using them first for all of the expenses that are eligible under state statute. And then you then go to the unassigned. And then in the unassigned, you want to make sure that you know what your fund balance policy is and you are staying on track with your goal. So the fund balance policy for GFW is 12%, and right now, this projected fund balance is right at 11%, so right, right around where we want it to be. And then here's the other two special revenue funds that we talked about. The food service is moving in a downward projection, and but that's planned. As we've talked about in the past when approving budgets, the food service is unique in the fact that the state and federal government doesn't want you to have too much in your fund balance, they want to make sure that you're using the revenue generated and putting it back into the program. So it was our plan to spend this down, and the fund balance has just gone up because of all the changes that have happened, so it's COVID free versus not, all those swings have helped the fund balance, but also in the same sense, we need to spend it down. And then the community service fund that fluctuates also up and down due to preschool being part of it, that it's really hard to when the state doesn't fund preschool, but it's very important that we have a preschool program as the requirements of going into a kindergarten are a lot more than they used to be, which is a good thing, but also in, so you have to have a great preschool program, which GFW does. But in the same sense, it's not funded. There's just a little bit of levy dollars that come through to help, and the rest is tuition-based. So. So that is all I have, do you guys have any questions?
Any questions, but I know we had some after we talked at our work session, and I think those have been answered, but this is helpful.
Emily?
No, I don't have additional questions since last session.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. They've been answering. Okay. Department of Labor, while we last meeting talking, I'm going over it, so. Lindsay, thank you for presenting that, good job as always, and we'll come back to it here later in the meeting.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a night.
You too.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? In a second. All bear. Motion passing. Okay. Information items. Superintendent reporting.
Sure. Wait, can you pull that calendar up here quick? This is, and try to blow it up as much as you can there, not literally, but I mean, enlarge it please. Right. I would, this afternoon, I wanted to blow it up, I was having troubles with it. This is just a preliminary calendar for next year, we we looked at this as well last at our work session, just in very rough, rough form. Follows much the same schedule as this current year, but we don't have a spring break next year. And we have the transition into new buildings, so there are a couple extra days for elementary staff in the fall that are called move days, 19th and 20th of August. And then for the middle school, high school, move days would be 22nd and 23rd of December, as we like to make a transition over over the holiday break. Other than that, and then there's one other day that's a flex day, that staff will have one day to they want to come in whenever and just document that time, just because moving doesn't just happen on its own and we're going to need staff to assist them in making that happen. Otherwise, it stays pretty much the same. We have we have 10 staff development. Ends up being 10 staff development, professional development days, then the two moving days and the one flex for 13 total. We have two conference days, conferences are as as we've had in the past. And then that's 168 student contact days for our K through, or excuse me, our sixth through 11th grade and 167 days for our K through five students and our seniors that get a get a extra day off as we head to head to May here, so. I will likely bring this back for approval next month, but we've been getting already calls to the office when our certain days next year, so families are, families and teachers are trying to make plans for next year, so. That is the calendar, oh, one other change, we had nine early releases this year, there'll be five, five next year. So we're just trying to move that down a little bit and those are, I think, tough on tough on families trying to deal with kiddos coming home at noon, so we're down to five for that. Any questions on the calendar? And we'll, it's preliminary at this time, but just try to get some information out there.
When do you think we'll?
I think April regular meeting will will have that for approval. Just some other things quickly, MSBA day at the Capitol, I did go down there with other superintendents and and school board members from across the state and just two notes, one, the state is looking at a budget deficit of 6 billion, looking out into the next biennium, so the message was pretty consistent, don't look for any new money other than what's going on in the formula by state laws, so. So that was kind of the theme for the day. And then the other thing, just talking local issues, Representative Harder has introduced our the bill that had been introduced last session to provide some funding for to repurpose each of the existing buildings, and that was a million dollars for each of the communities and and school buildings. She also said, you know, that one does not stand a great chance of passage with the with the budget situation at the state. But she has introduced another bill that offers tax credits for for repurposing existing public buildings such as these schools or perhaps the city hall or something else that that's open. Try to provide some incentives for developers to come and and repurpose these buildings, so. So good news for that. And hopefully that moves forward. Just a building update, I mentioned in a note to board, I'd like to do a tour for board members next Tuesday, if that works for people. By PM, we we go after most of the workers have exited the site, but a lot is happening inside, and so it'd be good to get folks out there again to see things. And then just a note on valedictorian, salutatorian. Our past practice has been that we have a valedictorian and salutatorian. And after conversations with our high school administration and staff, several things have evolved over time that really make it more difficult to evaluate who is a valedictorian and salutatorian. We have online classes, we have PSBO classes. Students can be in our school part of the day somewhere else, so it's tough to have a consistent grading practice, and I'll give an example from a previous district of mine. We had a college in the schools class that actually came to our campus at night. And the kids, rightfully so, found out that it was easier to get an A in that class than it was taking college into schools from our in-house teacher who was pretty tough. So they took that class. And it was all about making sure they had the grade, and that's not the intent of offering our class, it's to learn something, so. And then another example, I had a student very competitive, wanted to be valedictorian and knew if they took calculus as a senior, they had a shot at getting an A minus, and so they took an elective by ed class or something else that really didn't advance their educational purpose in any way, but they they protected their valedictorian stance and so what we're looking at and talking about, and I'm not asking you to take action tonight, but I want it out there publicly is eliminating that valedictorian and salutatorian. And how do you choose, you have 10 valedictorians, if you have 10 kids with 4.0? So it would be to go to a Latin honors system that you typically see at colleges, but a lot of high schools have done it as well, so you have a summa cum laude which would be a 3.9 to 4.0, a three-point average, magna cum laude, which would be 3.7 to 3.89, and then cum laude, which would be 3.5 to 3.69. And so all students have achieved that status would have either a special colored cords that they would wear at graduation or or a banner of some kind that they would wear as part of their graduation gown, so. Everybody gets recognized for their academic standing, but we're not having kids, in my opinion, make poor choices. That's what they want to take for class, just to protect a GPA. And we're not dealing with someone getting grades from five different institutions and teachers, whatever, that really complicates things, so. Enough on that, but.
That's that's more of a trend than a barrage.
Yeah. Valedictorians, salutatorians are becoming less and less common, and not just in Minnesota, I think across the country for some of the same same reasons because there are so many options out there.
I don't think I got any of those proven.
And the last thing, just a try to update on enrollment each month, so March enrollment, we're at 550 yet, which is a good thing. Which is the same as we were last month, down from our high of 553, but up from when we started the school year, so that's a good spot to be.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening and morning. We had a kind of a busy February, as you know, I've talked before about our lunch reading month, that did finish up at the end of February. Our students committed to reading 20 to 30 minutes a night in order to raise funds for the elementary school. Our goal was $12,000, and we brought in $13,900, so. Yeah, collectively, students read over 40,000 minutes, another woo-hoo. And we celebrated students reading and fundraising accomplishments at an our school assembly. Our students had decided that they would like to see me dance a little dance if they met their goal. So since we exceeded the goal, several staff members joined in a performance of Dancing Queen for the students. And students also enjoyed the campin' that they had in their classroom on February 27. I'm very thankful to our families and the community for their participation and the success of We Love To Read Month. We have kindergarten kickoff coming up on March 25th, which is next week, and look forward to meeting our kindergarten families. We currently have 37 families signed up to attend. In addition to all of the important information about kindergarten, we'll share about our dual-language immersion program and what a typical day is like for kindergarten students. A few weeks ago on March 7th, we had an international festival here, there were eight countries represented, and we had a great turnout. There was food, instruments and games to try from the various countries. Mr. Manuel, one of our interns from Spain, did a traditional dance that he had taught to the first-class immersion students. And Ms. Maldonado, our kindergarten immersion teacher, did a dance from Honduras with students in her kindergarten classroom. Ms. Susie, our intern from El Salvador, read some poetry with the help of students. And we are looking forward to welcoming more interns next year and hope to have three or four join us. We will be looking for host families for them. Professional development coming up during our professional development day is Andrea Hanson, a compass math coach from Southwest Central Co-op. Will be working with the staff on the new math standards that are slated for implementation in two thousand twenty-six. Staff will be looking at the ELA standards to determine where we might need to supplements from some of our new curriculum now that we've. Had two years of implementation of it. And our spent staff in Paris will be taking part in just some of the crisis intervention training that they do. Our T-Bird Community Arts, we were awarded the Art and Cultural Heritage Grant through Prairie Lakes Regional Arts Council, which is nine thousand dollars. This helps fund our summer art camp and the summer musical. The art camp will take place in June and we are currently hiring for a director and three other positions for the camp. Tryouts for Anastasia will take place in May. And the group is also busy planning for the spaghetti dinner during Grattle Day, sing with group. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm not going to cover some of my typical areas because I have. Some individuals next to me that will be doing that after I give an update on some other items today. So last week, students in grades eight through eleven completed pre-registration for our classes. And this week they are finalizing their course selections. Juniors registered today while the eighth-grade CCR class began registering with Ms. Woods as well. Half of the class completed the process today and the other half will do so tomorrow. Sophomores were also registered tomorrow as well and freshmen will complete their registration on Wednesday. Additionally, students in eighth, ninth, and eleventh grade participated in the Minnesota Student Survey. This optional and anonymous survey helps school districts gain insight into student experiences. The survey data helps schools identify areas where they can support their students better based off of team needs. Beyond registration, we are in the early stages of planning for graduation. We have four scheduled meetings with seniors to help them prepare for the big day. Our attendance team meets every Monday and as of now, all fifty-three seniors are on track to graduate. On the instructional side of things, our non-tenured teachers, meaning those. With three or less years of teaching are currently in their third round of observations. The state of Minnesota requires non-tenured staff to complete three administrative observations per year. With eighteen non-tenured staff in our building, this equates to fifty-four observations and fifty-four post-observations. Reflections and feedback sessions. Additionally, tenured staff must complete a summative evaluation every three years. So this year, five tenured teachers and at the middle school, high school are undergoing this process as well. Pair professionals are also required to have one observation per year. And we have four four pairs completing this requirement, including one new this year, so that would total of five. This is a time-intensive, yet essential component of staff development. As you can see, it's really important for us to have an effective support system so that our students. Can get the education that they need and we can retain our teachers and don't have to go through so many observations each year. With that said, our entire staff's professional development continues to focus on student engagement strategies. We started this last year and we're continuing this year and hopefully we'll continue to do that next year. Specifically, research-based practices known as total participation techniques. This year, our continuous improvement team and PLCs have been working on cycles of inquiry. Which has proven to be quite impactful this year and I am actually super proud of our teams. Lastly, we are preparing for Minnesota State testing, which will begin in the second week of April and run for three consecutive. Any questions?
That survey that the students, like you said, eight, nine, and eleven grades, so how come the tenth grade and twelfth grade?
I don't know, it's just chosen by the state, like younger grade levels can take it as well, and it's only every three years those grade levels take it. GFW has participated since the beginning of time, which is two thousand thirteen, so. We've done it since then, it has a bunch of different categories that ask students in the different developmental stages. And then you can look at those categories and you can even look at them over time to see any sort of trend data. And to look at, okay, what do we need to do for programming in our school to support our teens in all of those different categories?
And was the career period, we were talking about that the last meeting, that that happened prior to our, it did, okay.
There's a lot going on, everybody for lunch, I don't know, I'd probably say.
So you have eighteen non-tenured staff, are you doing all of this?
It are news or? Great question, so this year, since we have one of our teaching and learning coordinators, she is doing five of those. Our math department and then our band and choir. And then Mr. Wassman has a couple in special education, so two in special education. But otherwise, I do the rest of them.
Any other questions?
And that must be a forty-five minute period, so you go in there for forty-five minutes, there's a pre-planning thing that you do, you go and you observe for forty-five minutes. And then you have a post-observation with them, which is typically thirty to forty-five minutes, because they don't always get a lot of time with with me or their. Typically, and so it is usually ends up being forty-five minutes discussion, reflecting on their practice and then what are our next steps?
How soon is the post? Observation?
So it, we tried to get it within a week, but mine, like I just did one today, so my post-observation for that one will be on Wednesday. So I try to do it within the next or two days at Leeds meeting up with them. It might take me a little bit of time to write up the actual observation after we have our post-conversation. I like the staff members to be able to provide their own areas of growth and then also their areas of strength. And then we talk about what are the next steps and what should they be working on between the times at which I come. And then also I offer up planning sessions with them if they want to plan and prepare, not only for the next observation for myself. But also they get a little bit nervous about their peers coming in for their. Here. Observations that they have through QCOM, so a lot of times I'll help them plan and prepare a little bit for what that observation might look like for them. So that would just be in addition to.
How often do the peers come in and sit and observe?
Twice.
Twice, twice a year. Well, good, the just past experience with, if you wait too long and it's not fresh in everybody's mind, so it's good to hear that, it's all in a few days. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Yeah, so we have three high school students. Starting with you and a lot to introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone, I'm Eden Messerly and I'm the current student council president.
Welcome.
I'm Vivin Sterns and I'm in board of student council.
And I'm still, and I'll be the president next year.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming. So we'll do a dasher update quick.
It's in the, it's in the, the dasher update, it's in the board.
Yep, yep, I have it right here. Not a whole lot going on, other than they're fully staffed, so that's happy, good news, I guess.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we'll come back.
We'll come back.
We're gonna come back.
Yeah, thirty seconds and then that's your turn. Others, they had just general maintenance on some fan motors, dampers on a boiler. Tile, four tile repair. Setting up a batting cage, it's a spring sport season, it's the orange replacement on the green, so pretty light dasher report. Now, the floor is yours, student council.
So Mrs. Jacobson asked us to speak on behalf of the students and the current activities going on, so I'm going to start with the seniors. We have been planning for our graduation and our first meeting is this week on Wednesday. Sports, all the spring sports practices have begun. Baseball and golf started today, they were the last ones to start. Next is music, last Wednesday, the high school concert band received superior rating. At contests in CBI and the high school choir received an excellent rating. Ten through twelfth grade band and choir members are leaving this Friday for their trip to Florida. Moving on to FFA, the best-informed green hand region competition will be on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. There will be fourteen members competing and they will be tested on their FFA knowledge. Next, egg equipment day is coming up on April fourth, members will drive their egg equipment in a parade around high school and the elementary school. Other things going on, we have many state qualifying individuals and teams that will be headed to state convention from April twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. For career development event competition teams, we have a dairy evaluation team and companion animal science team. On the dairy team, members include William Bash, Luke Batten, Bradley Wursel, Amy Wursel, and Nicole Bean. The companion animal science team placed first in the region and members include myself, Luxie Jazinski, Maddie Lee, Abby Willigal, and Matthew Lee. For proficiencies, we have four members heading to state for judging, including Abby Willigal in small animal production and care. William Bastian in dairy production, myself in outdoor recreation, and Carson Lee in grain production. For star awards, we have three qualifiers, including Abby Willigal for star farmer, William Bastian for star placement, and myself for star in agribusiness. There will also be members receiving their state degree, including William Bastian, myself, Abby Willigal, and Matthew Burns. A few students also applied to be in the state band and choir. William and Luke Bastian will be playing in a band and Maddie and Matthew Lee will be singing in the choir.
Now with the student council, we have been organizing a bingo, we organized a bingo activity today for St. Patty's little theme and everyone got. Whoever got a bingo got to come down and grab a cookie. And we have also been working on our spring playing week, which will be in April.
Sometimes April, probably beginning of that.
Yeah, and so we're planning on dress-up themes and activities to get the student body more involved and have some fun and uplift each other. And now the student, or the National Honor Society helped with the middle school. Middle school student of the month assembly and will be volunteering at the Sibley County Senior Citizen Expo on Thursday, April tenth, from eleven-thirty to one. Any dress members also helped supervise the middle school mini-course day activities, which include bowling, tubing at Mount Keel. Dragonfly painting, art classes, baking classes, outdoor survival with Mr. Bussi, and Filipino cooking. Mrs. Jacobson hopes to work with a group of students to receive feedback regarding their school experiences. And Eden and I have been a part of a school store class, which was new this year. And we have been working on how to build a school store, hoping to sell T-Bird merchandise. T-Bird manufacturing goods, food, drinks, and more for the student staff. In the future, we hope to partner with the accounting and marketing classes. Any questions?
Very well presented by both of you, thank you. What's prom this year?
April twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Okay, good.
When's your FFA equip?
I believe it's gonna be the third Wednesday in May, the third or fourth.
Member Reese, I just wondered if you were going. Well, I I I might go help with the after-prom party, I was asked, but we'll see.
Did Madison have report or?
No, I'm just listening then because I'll be going next year.
So we're gonna try to have one junior and senior every pass we can have each time, but like we said. It just depends on the activities.
Yeah, well, good job, and we look forward to hearing how all of our state participants do and good luck to everybody. If you could pass the word, if you'd be in one of them, so congratulations and.
And Mrs. Jacob, we recently have AAA award winners, it's nobody mentioned anything about, right?
Yes, AAA award winners are William Bastian and Eden Messerly.
And AAA is for what?
Sure, it's an award regarding arts, athletics, and academics. And so I was chosen based off of those things. Some of the things I was involved in, I've been involved in volleyball and softball for athletics, academics. I have about a four-point oh GPA. And then for arts, I've been involved in band and also choir and jazz band.
Well, congratulations, that's wonderful, and it's actually really nice to have, it's been about a year we've decided since we've had representatives from the students, so it's. That's refreshing to see you guys and hear what's going on from your aspect, so great job.
And they told them they were dismissed after they presented.
That's why I got up and locked the door.
Yeah, you're really, but thank you very much, enjoy the nice evening today. Ditch or something for a couple of years. Okay, we'll move on to board reports, so start with Riverbend, remember this.
Yes, I take it away from the February meeting. First of all, Riverbend is a really solid financial position, it's got fifteen percent bond value. And the other thing that really impressed me. Was they, they put together a ten-year plan for things, physical things that need to be placed to work on. In two thousand twenty-one, the ten-year plan, and they are nearly complete in less than four years. And this includes such things as a roof for three hundred and ten thousand, parking lot for hundred and seven, office carpeting, LED lights. Cup cleaning. Concrete outside, playground for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Some of the other things that aren't done are things such as water, your HVAC, as they quit. So they have a. Very solid approach to keeping that place running.
And do you know, you may, you may not know, but that's all self-funded, or is it, they're getting grants, it's all, it's all schools. Well, we sent a lot, we talked about this last, we sent a lot of students there, that's a good program down there, it's solid, it's good to hear that, they keep moving forward.
Yeah, I think it's, I've only been there twice, so I say it's. Yeah, I'm impressed with everyone around there.
Okay. Good, anything else? Thank you for the update, policy committee?
Just review the policies that were going over tonight, it was pretty simple, language changes. That was mostly. Oh, I put the stick this, put together for guidelines.
Yeah, I'd agree, it's same as, every time I have to do these, it's state mandated changes and it's verbiage. Nothing over the top. I guess the biggest thing is adding electric bike safety to the training session for the fourth through eighth grade. They can add to.
Pretty straightforward.
FF LRP.
We had Wolf and Pearl Sanders in there. And they went over the updates, couple of small changes. Nothing. Nothing really out of the ordinary, I I don't feel.
Let's, so that's the school.
Something where they're taking money out of our contingency fund or something, though. You know, the windows or something, they had to put wood in and. You know, there's always seems to be something, we keep whittling away at our unbalance there.
But it's still in great shape with over half of it left, with over half the project completed, so. As far as public construction world works, that's a good equation to be ahead of. And it's, we don't just keep doing our due diligence of questioning. You guys have been, you guys have been really great at that.
They do keep just for that notice.
Yep, yep, they they know, they're aware.
That's, and that's probably the only reason why they have stayed as far from the contingency as they have.
Anything else? Other than the school, anything else we're working on at the moment, we got budget coming up here soon, but.
Really just started conversations on our twenty-six budget here.
Amazing how quickly a year goes, it's like we just did that.
We talked a little bit about open that, but Kelly's looking into that.
Yeah, we can, and maybe we might have nothing on that at the next business meeting.
Yes.
Anything else you want to add?
No, not really. Budget is coming up here.
That's the new priority.
We have discussions, we'll do more.
The ever-moving target. All right, thank you, everybody. Community engagement, you guys met just a little bit, all right?
Yep, some of the highlights, Kelly kind of talked about it a little bit with open.
Yep, some of the highlights, um, Kelly kind of talked about it a little bit with open house with the new school. So stay tuned for that, as we're kind of looking at, you know, probably go two different, um, open house days for that. Something else that we talked about in length is a donor wall for, and within the new school as, you know, donations come in. We really appreciate those, and we would, um, that that should have a significant place within our building as an appreciation. To that, and then, you know, further logistics and donations keep happening and how that works, so. Talked about that, um, at length, then talk about our current facilities and, um, plan with those. There is a meeting at Winter City Hall at seven on April twenty second. Um, for a discussion on what to do, so.
Will that be for just the Winter site or?
It's just winter.
Okay.
Specific, Givens hasn't said anything yet.
Okay.
And then, um, yeah, those were the highlights for me.
But there was some discussion about what would cost to tear those schools down and stuff like that, so, and I don't, you know. I think Kraus Anderson come up with some figures, uh, if we read first for this school, what it was gonna cost and do some of that, so.
So that's all pretty fluid at the moment.
Yeah, and not very many good options.
Yeah, um. There's, I know there's somebody that needs to talk to you when the time is right.
And I did meet with them last week.
Okay, good, um.
You know, and I, and I would maybe add, we didn't really talk, but, you know, a question to the board is we may want to consider. Some, some funding of hiring somebody to market, you know, market the buildings.
Let's take out a D when we can, it'll be available too.
Yeah, but, you know, these things won't just.
They don't go away on their own.
Be snapped up, uh, uh, by word of mouth here, so somebody that deals with commercial, real estate, whatever, and.
And, uh, we're also on the development side, not just a real estate agent, that's just trying to sell for more to building, so. Lot of, uh, out of the box thinking, uh, will be required. Um, you said the twenty second of April?
Yeah.
So that's not, that's a month away yet. I mean, we're, we're kind of down to about a year. We need to have a decision made with the two sides. Um, and you said there's, Givens kind of, so.
Yeah, she, well, she had indicated that, um, she being Dana at the city had indicated they would be setting a meeting at some point. But I have not heard. Um, and they, they, um, obviously I shared the surveys that we did as a school district with each of the councils. They have that information.
We might want to put that on our next to the whole. Pass to talk about, because that could be a very sound conversation.
Okay.
The next one is. Maybe we have a part for that special meeting on four seven, and we chat a little bit about that, so. Okay, and, uh. Executive committee, turns out that, uh, while I wasn't there, I remember George was trying to hold himself with your airport security. Um, so I thought he was gonna be there, but you couldn't make it either, hence probably the phone call and the last emergency. Yeah, so, um, Emily.
That's me. Um, we, we talked a lot about the items that are coming up, um. Um, our agenda, so hopefully you guys didn't miss much. We're gonna get to. I mean, Kelly and I talked a little bit more about budgets. Plans, and that's about it, sorry. If there's one to miss, it's, okay.
That was the one. All right, so that's it for the informational items, now onto our action items, so the very first one is, uh. Prove the revised twenty twenty, twenty four, twenty five district budget, so. This, uh, what we just listened to, Lindsay, what we talked to, talked about for an hour after, for the big media.
I'll make a motion to approve your guys, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five budget.
Okay, can I get a second, second, then, on favorite? Motion passes.
Just a discussion point on that too, because I asked us at the work session is, you know, why, what's the point in approving? This, what happens if we don't, but it's really just to acknowledge that we have seen it, we looked at it, we know where we're at, so. For every information that is possibly watching.
Yeah, so some districts don't do what we did, um, they just, they approve it, and then they won't revisit it until. The end of the fiscal year, which is June thirtieth.
Right.
Um, so we're kind of mid-season midway through, a little past midway, um, taking a snapshot of it, making sure we're. We're staying on track, so.
And I would say it's a, it's a very slim minority that don't touch it at all. Most districts do a revision at some point, January, February, March.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, item B, approve turn lane contract to MR paving out in one. The, the budget was three hundred fifty thousand when the. Kids went out for school, right?
Right.
Um, and now.
Hundred nine more.
It's a hundred nine more at four hundred fifty nine, and they gave us a good explanation on a hundred and nine.
Just, um, that it was what the market said that day, we had three bids that, you know, we had four bids, one was. Like in the seven hundred dollar, it was way up there, and then three were, three were all within that four fifty to four ninety range, so. Um, yeah.
And that's a couple year old number as well, the.
Well, right, that's been out there for a while, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we, that's, that's currently into the early school.
Early and, and the, and the approach to, to the forced field on the east side of the property, which was part of the purchase.
Uh, so they don't like it, but, uh, we need to find a way to recoup. So maybe make that up at some point, you know, so, uh, can I get a motion to approve the contract to MR paving? Contract MR David, maybe a second?
I'll second.
On favor? She passes. Uh, NBC approved commissioning contract to work KFI engineers of Louisville, so. Um, so that number was part of the budget as well, um, for the school project of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the actual is one hundred and thirty one thousand nine hundred, so we just made up eighteen thousand. Um, so what they're gonna do is.
Do you want to explain?
Yeah, so, yep, yep, so, um, Wolf was the engineer, so they put it on paper. Mechanical contractors, electrical contractors, public contractors all come in and, um, install it per the plans. And instead of them saying, yep, it's good to go, everything, we did it the way you wanted it, KFI is a, it's another engineering firm. Is gonna come in and test all the equipment, they're gonna go through, make sure all the specs are met, and, uh, basically do the check and balance of, uh. Uh, to Wolf and, uh, contractors on site, um. And I personally work with KFI a lot, they're a great firm, and, uh, I have all the faith in the Willigals in them to, uh, do us well here for sure. Um, okay, uh, motion approved the commission contract to work KFI. Second?
I'll second it.
On favor? Motion passes. Item D, approve UEA seniority list. Uh, for twenty four, twenty five, which was attached in the, uh, packet, so.
Basically, our unified education associate, our teacher's seniority.
Yep, and can you explain the reason that, uh, we're gonna be ashamed?
Yeah, good, um, yeah, you see a number of them here, these seniority lists are typically approved every year. And, and they potentially set a pecking order in case there are reductions in force. Um, in any one of those given areas, so, uh, if, if we had to, just saying, you know. We're gonna reduce, uh. I think of someone, we have one teacher, a Spanish physician, um, which we don't have right now, um. We would have to look to the seniority list, who has a Spanish license, who is the least senior person with a Spanish license, and that's who would be reduced. And so kind of this, it's, it's establishing that, that order for all of these different.
It's the hierarchy.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So we have a bunch of them to go through then, um. So can I get a motion to approve the UEA seniority list twenty four, twenty five?
I'll make a motion to approve the UVA seniority list to twenty four, twenty five.
A second?
I'll second.
On favor? Motion passes.
Just one quick comment, and back to Principal Jacobson's comments about all the observations, and Jensen's had them too. For Thompson, um, when you look at that list, uh, probationary teachers have been, as was stated, have been hired within the last three years. Or could be a tenured teacher who moved here and has one year probation under us, but in our case, they're all three year probation. Um, and out of fifty nine teachers, I think it's twenty nine are probationary teachers right now, so. We have a very young staff right now, and that puts some added pressures on these two ladies. Uh, to get those observations done, and not just that, it's coaching them on an ongoing basis. That's their newer teachers, so, um, yeah, I, I hadn't realized that until about a month ago when I looked at this. Wow, that's, that's a half of our staff. So a teacher can have a two year, from another school and bring it in here, and then you've got the final year. No, no. It's gotta be all of here. So if a teacher starts new, new somewhere and goes two years and then moves here, they'd start all. They start over, that's what I thought. Yeah, if, uh, if teacher is five years somewhere and moves here. Starting over. They're, then, they're, they've been tenured somewhere, so then we only have one year probation once they've been tenured somewhere. Now, our exception is our international teachers, I, I don't even know if they have tenure in Philippines, but. They come in here as veteran teachers, but they're three year probationary teachers.
And our observations are, it's something that's required by the state, so it's.
It's part of the program. Well, you guys, uh, keep up the good work, give your hands full, a lot of time invested in that for sure, once all of their ass, like you have. Um, all right, so we approved the seniority list, now we'll move on to, uh, item E, approve UEA preschool and school readiness. Seniority list for twenty four, twenty five, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the UAE preschool and school readiness seniority list.
Any second? On favor? Motion passes, and then one more, um. Four more, oh yeah, yeah, well, only one more UEA, that's how to say it. Uh, um, item F, approve UEA ECFE and AB seniority list, can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the UEA ECFE and AB seniority list.
A second? On favor? She passes. Uh, item G, approve local two eighty four seniority list twenty four, twenty five, okay, get a motion to approve that. Second?
I'll second.
On favor? Motion passes. Item H, approve bus drivers association seniority list for, oh. Twenty four, twenty five, I can get a motion to, uh, pass the bus drivers seniority list.
I can make a motion to approve the bus driver association seniority list.
Can you get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, on favor? Should passes. Item I, approve principal seniority list for twenty four, twenty five, can I get a motion to pass, uh, principal seniority list? A motion to approve the principal seniority list for twenty four, twenty five, any second?
I'll second.
On favor? Motion passes. Item J, approve seeking, we're, now we're done with that. Item J, approve seeking proposals for qualified contractors for transportation services for twenty five, twenty six school year. So the first year of the new school. So we're just approving the dabbling of that option. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, seeking proposals for qualified contractors for transportation services? Twenty five, twenty six year.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
On favor? Motion passes.
I, I would just comment, we, we had a meeting with bus drivers last week, so we. They didn't read it in the paper for the first time, the, you know, they get nervous whenever something like that happens, but as you stated. We are, we're just out there to see what the market is, um. We are in a unique area where every district on our perimeter is, has private contracting bus service. So we have four or five private contractors in the area that would be interested in us.
They're all, they're already steering our edges.
Yes, yes.
Actually within our.
And coming into, into our district, yes, so, so we're. You know, we just need to compare what's out there, um, does it make more sense to, um. Keep going the way we are and start, we need to start buying buses if that's the case, because we have not done that for a while. Um, where you contract, you pay a higher rate for your routes, but bus costs are, are rolled into that higher rates, so.
Yeah, so the FFLRP has been talking about this for a few months now, when I was still on, and it's. Yeah, we won't be in the business of owning fifteen buses that are, some are aging, some definitely need replacement versus. Um, you know, from just entertaining, like penciling it out, so doing our due diligence later, um. So we approved that, yeah. Okay, um, item. What RP, oh, that's just more about, yeah, item K, uh, donation resolution, I'm gonna pull it up here. We have, uh, given lines, five hundred dollars. Restriction community bus, so that's, is there, that's for the, towards the busing service?
That's toward the, uh, the, the community bus that is in each of our three towns on a rotating schedule, and it's.
That little green one.
It's the one that's been redone, um, and, uh, residents can come in, and there's clothing, there's.
Oh, yeah.
Trialtry items, uh, it's been very, very well received, uh, Tommy Shiro's done a great job with that project and.
And it looks like it's being recognized with the five hundred dollar, uh, given lines, um, which is very much appreciated. This is Elmer, roll call?
No, first you have to get a motion.
Oh, I got a motion to prove it, sorry, um, bigger motion to approve the five hundred donation, I get a second?
I'll second. Breeze?
Yes.
Grossom?
Yes.
Stare?
Yes.
Turtle?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Akri?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, second one, uh, Peace Lutheran Church donated a hundred dollars towards the T-Bird Club. Can I get a? You did.
You did it all.
Oh, we didn't hold that, oh, I thought we did each one for some reason, my apologies.
But you can announce what that other one.
Yeah, so, uh, we also got a hundred dollar donation from Peace Lutheran Church out of one throughout, toward their T-Bird Club.
I, I have a question concerning this process. Does the board ever turn down donations?
No.
So it is possible, though, to turn down if somebody would donate money and put a. Hook on that money, in order, in order to get it, you need to do X. It would be your, within your rights to turn that donation down. So typically, these are coming just very specifically for programs that we're already offering or supporting, so. So we are looking for hidden agendas.
Do they, are they always required to, um? Do they, are they always required to um, give a restriction or? No, so. If it's just a blank restriction, it can go towards the general founder and, and then who decides where that? I've never seen one yet that hasn't had a restriction, but normally they come with.
For a particular organization in, in other districts, if they came, we would probably put it to like a student, a general student activity fund. That could go to help support like a middle school retreat day or. Pay to see Principal Thompson dance.
But what, they take up any time and in large amounts. Yes, kids, because it's just, it is like fun money, like, you know, it's like, those are the stipulations, we have to do something that's fun, and then it requires. Payments on students and to eliminate or lower the payment, it would be great, so.
Yep, this is number, we're good then on that? Yep, and now uh, for letter, or um, item L that we added at the beginning. Uh, I get a motion to set the special meeting for four, seven and talk uh budget.
I want a budget on four, seven and. After the work session, six, oh, he's doing that first, okay.
Take a second?
I'll second.
Earl, on favor? Well, that's, we made it through it, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? On favor?